And I know we are going to continue this at our next meeting. I'd just like to hold a, take a moment if we have any specific or direct questions for Mr. Geisell and our intern. Because we do have a great intern around. We, let's try to get that on the record and then maybe transition over to our next, our next item and and we're gonna come back to this, but I think this is very good and I wanna, I wanna us all to be on the same page here. This is the largest development the town's ever seen.
And most likely to be the last based on our current zoning, but I don't wanna be quoted on that because you never know what could come. I mean, again, you got, also got you hills out there too, right? Eight hundred units of affordable housing.
And because this is in a gateway zone.
This is a planned development district.
Another project of this scale probably isn't coming for.
With the commercial component.
Frank, there were a couple more questions I had shot in that email and some of them are along the thread of we were going.
So, so in turn, I just wanna finish up on the
Oh, yeah.
On the schools, on the, on the school enrollment issue. What Mr. Harris indicated is that there were six, six kids total from that development already in school and, in the school system. Four of which were already in the system prior to the construction of these units. Let's see. In regards to the value of residential development versus commercial, obviously, we know that commercial generates more net revenue than residential. Mr. Harris indicated that due to a mixture of residential units due to schoolchildren, rental typically have fewer kids than owner occupied. And contemplated three bedroom units would have a slightly negative effect on the enrollment. However, he said, you know, that all ignores the contribution to the infrastructure, the residential neighborhoods. To the north, oh, that's a separate idea, sorry. He briefly discussed the current assessment at fifty thousand dollars a building, there are ten buildings, roughly twenty-eight units per building and they propose another four buildings, roughly two hundred thousand dollars in, in revenue. In terms of the affordable housing, how would that impact our efforts? I think it would improve them, certainly. According to the developer though, it does just not work for their plan.
Affordable housing is being attached to this?
No, no.
Frank was just wondering if it was on the radar.
Well, we're at it. If we have to do this thing that may be necessary to bring forward this commercial infusion for the town.
What's interesting-
Why don't we kill two birds with one stone and see if we can't negotiate affordable housing units in this prime location that has access to central shopping and the highway and these other.
And if I read your email correctly, our town does not have the ten percent affordable housing threshold in development of this scale. Might move that needle.
So, we did, I did some quick math, you know, and I talked to Mr. Harris and he said, well, his client obviously is not, has no interest in the affordable housing component.
No.
And, and when you do thirty percent of a hundred and twenty units, I'm sorry, you know, it, it, it doesn't work for them. But that doesn't mean that they can't deed restrict some of them just on their own, right? Why not?
But they'd be getting less for each one.
Nobody said they have to meet the thirty percent because they're not applying under eight dash thirty G.
Right.
They could just volun-
If they do that.
Pardon?
Our town would want to be able to claim it if it's happening.
Well, if it's him, yeah, but they can, what I'm saying is they can voluntarily deed restrict units for forty years to meet the requirements. But they don't have to provide us thirty percent as you would under eight thirty G. Why not, you know?
Yeah, something to think about.
So, I think that is a possibility, you know? So, even if you take ten units, you know, that's better than none, you know? So, anyway, but that, that was a question that Frank had brought up. Let's see. Again. I think, does that answer most of your questions? I don't know if that, if I hit them all.
No, maybe some lookups. I don't know if anybody else has, but I would definitely be interested in hearing what our zoning official or zoning officer or assessor, I guess, is calling these apartments.
Three bedrooms.
Two bedrooms in a den or three bedrooms. What do, what do we see, you know, the expert who establishes standard for the town? And I think we probably need to invite in some data about a school population, what has been predicted and what has happened. Because that goes on every year, predictions and actuals.
Excellent.
Great.
And bus routes may also be telling. Bus routes also have, have the five that are, you know, where are they coming from?
Yes.
Okay, Gary. Early on, we were talking about the, the Theo always proposed four hundred units and the town aired on the side of caution and said two eighty. Now, I, I think that's probably true, but I think there might have been a little more science to it than that. So, while that's really at issue here, it's going from two eighty to four hundred. I, I'd like to know exactly why we said two eighty because I don't wanna invalidate the logic that went into it without knowing what it is from back when that happened. So, I'd like to know why they said two eighty.
That'll take some research.
Yeah, but that's, I think that's one.
Yeah, they didn't pull that number out of nowhere, so it had to be for a reason.
That too, yeah.
That might be it, but it might not. But if they came up with some reason, why, I don't wanna go against it.
There was discussion in, in the minutes, I would think, so I'll, I'll take a look at the minutes.
And I think Ernie's point stands that this conversation might have already happened and we wanna be sharp on what the takeaway is from now on.
Right, he's right.
With respect to this agenda item, have we reached saturation for tonight?
Yes.
Okay, and so by all means, email Gary if you have any more questions and, oh, I wanna touch on some of the New London Day archives that Frank had passed along and make sure that we're following
Yeah, that's-
All our protocols, I think we're fine.
Full disclosure, I sent the entire planning commission, I was doing some research just over what went on and I just took all of the New London Days reporters on Gateway because I have no, no real foundation. And as I was looking at them, I said, boy, everybody needs to read this, so I put them all into one document. I, I don't know if I CC'd you on it, Mr. Geisell, but it probably needs to be an exhibit. We didn't have any discussion about it. I just said, hey, look what I found for myself and you may wanna read this as well.
Yeah, I did receive it.
Is it appropriate to make that an exhibit? I don't know, but it's, it's a public record and I'll mask it.
I, I think we can, you know, include it in the file and, you know.
I, I think it is very noteworthy, what he did and reading it, it just changed, you, you went back and forth. You flipped back and forth with what it was, but you were so on point.
Well, no, I took them chronologically.
Right, the way that he did it was so on point. I really started from the bottom up.
Yeah, the things I did not put in were letters to the editor and I think one opinion piece got past me and I didn't realize it was an opinion piece, but I tried to just put reporters in there.
Yeah.
Great, great.
I know, and, and I like that because as we, we'll move to our next meeting in two weeks. We're gonna have on one hand the presentation from zoning and on the other hand, we'll have all of these, you know, an archive of the press and what was said and what was quoted and, and hopefully that should give us plenty to, to discuss. Okay.
Yeah, good.
Without further objection, we're gonna move on to the four B application of Theodore A. Harris. Any objections?
Nope.
Do we wanna do a comfort break?
Sure.
Let's do a short comfort break.
Yes.
Comfort.
Yeah, down to the pub.
Can we go now?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can help him build it.
Ernie or Ed, could I have you just switch the mic off? No, the, the, the orange mic, the, the little orange switch on the walls. Thank you.
Time is eight forty seven, commission's back in session. We've just completed four A, the Gateway application, we're on four B, the application of Theodore A. Harris, application for a text amendment to the East Lime zoning regulations for a proposed brew pub regulation in the light industrial zone. My understanding in terms of time is that zoning is ready to move on this?
Yes.
So it's time sensitive, we'd like to get a report tonight out the door so that zoning has it for their deliberations.
At their next, this Thursday, the public hearing is to open, yes.
So the brew pub regulation is a new thing, it got added to our commercial business zone, not our commercial, what's CA, commercial?
Just commercial.
Oh, commercial, which is, which is the west end of Main Street and Flanders. So we've approved it in the Niantic Village, otherwise known as the CB zone.
Correct, commercial, commercial business, yeah.
Right, but it's chartered, it's not Flanders.
Correct.
Flanders is CA, West Main's CA, Niantic Village is CB.
For all intents and purposes, yes.
So we conducted our deliberations on that, we were looking at the compatibility of that use as it was a new use with the other uses already existing in Niantic Village. Ultimately, we decided that provided the controls for smells and a few things were met, it was probably just like a restaurant, in which case it would fit nicely in our town. I'm summarizing, obviously, with respect to what is before us this evening. The question is the same, except instead of being Niantic Village, it is the LI zone, which is a zone we don't spend a lot of time in. That, it's comprised of the light industrial on the west edge of town on, um, that's Capital Drive.
So if you can see here, here's the LI zone on Capital Drive and Liberty Way, and it horseshoes around this SU district, zoom in there a little more, let that catch up. Our Field Services Building is located here, just for reference, and this is Sea Spray, the affordable housing district. If I zoom back out, the other light industrial district that we have in town is along Industrial Road, yeah, Park Road, I believe it is. Which you can see here, along.
You know, they, they broke, they broke ground yesterday for the comp, the, um.
Norwood.
The what? Yeah, the orthopedic.
So Norwood Orthopedic is moving into this, this parcel here.
They broke ground yesterday, which is great.
So that just kind of gives you an idea, and then just surrounding, which is south of ninety-five, opposite the Gateway Plan Development District. The other areas are adjacent to the Development District, on the west side of the Gateway, running north, out toward Church Lane, and then there's just a small bit of LI, kind of randomly placed, my guess is this whole Gateway Plan Development District was initially all LI. I had to confirm with, confirm that with Mr. Mulholland, but at any rate, the current districts are as configured.
Where's this cemetery, Flanders Cemetery?
Uh, right where that LI is, so if I, if you can see through the transparency there, but if not, I'll just unclick the zoning, and there's your cemetery.
Okay, so where would the LI be?
Where would what be?
The cemetery?
Is zoned LI, yes.
Oh, you can have open containers there.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Really? Why would you zone a cemetery?
That's weird.
Well, you know, I could just go back and just, we can look at the permitted uses. So, so here, so in terms of the zoning regulations, the light industrial districts, it's general description and purpose, a district suitable for heavy commercial and light manufacturing oriented, essentially to major transportation facilities. Purpose of this district is to provide areas for industrial and commercial uses in open setting that will not have objectionable influences on adjacent residential and commercial districts. You know, that said, here, light or manufacturing uses which are not dangerous by reason of fire or explosion, et cetera, by reasons of dust, odor, fumes, waste, smoke, glare, noise, vibration, other noxious or objectional features, trucking terminal, printing, publishing, warehouse, wholesale, storage, commercial nurseries, greenhouses, garden centers, office complex, and accessory uses, customerly incidental to the above. And then we have some special permit uses, you know, I don't necessarily see restaurant here, or, but you can have a hotel, some hotels do come with restaurants. So, you know, I don't know how that would be necessarily interpreted.
But it's manufacturing, not really a restaurant.
What?
Is there anything on the next page?
Uh, adult use establishments, and that ends the section of permitted uses.
Don't even tell me, yes, yes.
Other adult use establishments, wow, that needs clarification.
Actually, you, you.
Well, we, we, you can go to section one of the regs, and there's a definition.
Well, you know, we're talking, and this is, of course, the regulations, these are, I'd be curious to see how many of these actually have been, um.
Put before the.
Yeah, or how many exist in the light industrial zone, for instance, a deli, coffee shop, or cafeteria, I don't know, are there any?
Sure.
Where, no, in the, in the light industrial?
Yeah.
Which one?
The one that's, um, on the corner prior to going across the street on Hope Street. There's the, um, there's a store there where the, the package.
Oh, Hartford Giant Grinder?
Yeah.
But that's not a light industrial.
What is it?
That's commercial.
That's our, um, Niantic Village.
That's a business, yeah. This is up by, like you said, Rocky and that connector, and a couple of other similar places.
So I.
Yeah, and, and I want to emphasize that because we're reviewing the regulation at the, at the Light Industrial District as a whole, we have to imagine this is going to appear anywhere in any of the light industrial parcels. So in the same way we had that regulation for the Retreat Center in a residential zone, we knew exactly where the proposal was headed, but our action was going to approve it for potentially any parcel in the whole residential thing in town. Yeah, R eighty, and so I just want to make sure that we are directing our attention at all of the light industrial in town and contemplating the impact of a brew pub wherever it may appear.
Correct, so I, I think, again, you have the CB zone where we have already approved a similar type use. The light industrial zone is limited in, in size. I think in our last comments to the zoning commission regarding the previous referral, we indicated that they should consider permitting it in the commercial district as well as the light industrial district, district and the Gateway Plan Development District, provided that they had sufficient controls on it, and that it wasn't a noxious type use. So, you know, in that same spirit, I just drafted a memo to you, pointing out the objectives from chapter one, objective two point one, how it promotes compatible and sustainable economic development. Again, it's, it's a manufacturing use, clearly a, you know, as the application is, you know, written, aside from the applicant wanting to, you know, sell alcoholic liquor to be consumed on or off the premises, you know, when I say off the premise, I don't know. Those are, when they sell beer brewed on the premise in sealed containers, they can consume those off the premise. You know, but they, they do want to sell alcoholic liquor to be consumed on the premise with or without food. So, you know, they, they might, I might suggest that they clarify that if you want a strictly, a, a, a manufacturing use, that strictly manufacturing beer, where they would not necessarily sell other forms of liquor, that they only sell malt beverages, or, you know, that, that. Or beer, beer only, only beer, you know, no beer, no wine, so when I read, the way that reads is that I could open up a bar in addition to my brewery. But that's very similar to the language in the Tap Room Brewery that we approved for, what we said was consistent with the P O C D, so again, I think you could, I think it's reasonable to, to recommend that the zoning commission consider maybe revising that language. I think it's a minor change, well, I mean, significant in how the, the application of the regulation, but I don't think it's significant enough to warrant like a new public hearing notice or anything like that.
And another thing, our plan of conservation of the new regulations that we have adopted or going to adopt, see, we haven't done that yet. It's kind of like, it's right there, we have to make a decision, and in our packet, in blue, the blue writing.
Where are we going?
Next to the. The blue writing.
Tying that to this somehow, or?
Uh, this is, this is section nine, this is the next agenda item.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So we're skipping one to the other?
No, no.
What?
No, it's just, um, I know zoning's in a hurry, but we definitely need to make sure and ensure that it's going to be a brewery and not selling any other type of liquor. I hate to see liquor at the cemetery.
Well, I, I suppose, and I don't, I don't know how that works, if you buy a cemetery and can you redevelop it, I don't know, but I'm sure the state has.
Crescent Beach is a cemetery. It's an Indian cemetery.
Well, I'm sure the State Department of Health has certain regulations on.
No digging.
Cemeteries, so with that said, I, I certainly think it's reasonable to, to make a comment to that effect.
Sorry.
Cautioning the, the zoning commission on that language of the use of liquor versus beer.
What is alcoholic liquor?
It's vodka, it's gin.
Is there a non-alcoholic liquor?
No, liquor is defined as a harder, not, it's not a.
Harder substance than beer.
But I mean, it's alcoholic redundant.
Well, it depends, if you buy a bottle of vanilla extract and it's thirty-six percent alcohol, is that considered liquor?
I don't know, but let's do this.
Vanilla extract.
Huh?
Taste it.
Extract.
That's, that's exactly right.
Although, but I can buy, you can buy a bottle of schnapps, that's thirty percent liquor, but you can only buy it at a package store, so I don't know, I, I.
Right.
If you want, we can look up the definition, that's.
It's okay.
Google is at our fingertips.
Well, there's, I'd like to try to make a, a motion on this tonight, you know, part of what I want to, the way I want to approach it is, can we think of a parcel in the light industrial where this would be a bad idea, where somebody down the line is going to say, why is there a bar there, you know?
That's it, it's not going to be a bar.
Well, and I think that's.
It's a brewery, right?
It's a brew pub.
Brew pub, again, we have to have control of the language, it's a bar.
Some other things, just maybe nuances, along with the, in their definition where they, I don't mean to shift gears in front of the thought. The, the alcoholic liquor, I mean, if it's a brew pub that some pubs are also restaurants, that might be something to consider, but the finish of their definition, or their proposed definition is with or without food, which I think runs contrary to what I, I understand our zoning goals have been, to not to be serving alcohol of any variety without food, and that was one of our potential holdups with the, the taproom, which. We probably have to get our, our own station books updated at some point, it doesn't have the taproom definition, and yet if, if that is approved, not the one that I pulled out of file cabinet, separate issue though, to move where it was, another point I was going, besides the alcoholic liquor and the food, when we did the, was it CB or CA for the taproom, CB?
CB.
That went in as a special use permit, which then forced an applicant to be subject to section twenty-five, special permits where all of the concerns about smells and neighbors and things like that come into play. This applicant has suggested it go right into permitted uses, not into the special use category, so it would have a freebie on all of the smells and noise and other things that might not be such a concern as in the CB, but that is another nuance, it's a different name for what sounds like a similar application, taproom versus brew pub, and we're putting it into the permitted use instead of the special use category.
And I think that's because of the zone in which it's being.
This is just a tougher zone?
Yes.
Okay.
The zone is designed for.
I'm okay, I'm not going to showstopper, just to point that out.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point, because it establishes protocols for what would happen if, should a problem arise. The special use permit is, it's a special case, you know, and, and I know, you know, outdoor dining, certain things which are perfectly consistent with their zones, we have special permits for because there is that off chance that somebody is going to have a problem, and we want to be able to have tools to address the problem.
To continue the thought, just turn around and look at what's up in permitted use, where this would land, and down in special use. I'm wondering if we're targeting the right place.
So in terms of noxious odors or, um, noise, I don't know that brewing makes a whole lot of noise, but, um, you know, you're permitting as of right, a trucking terminal?
Right, if it were a brewery, no shovels, but it's a place where we're bringing in customers, retail customer, really.
So in that, you know, and, and, you know, where you're bringing in retail customers in any one of these, it, it's only eleven point two point one, the deli, coffee shop, cafeteria, or training facilities? I guess, you know, that people are going to come, health spas, I think. It, it may be better suited under a special permit use.
So here, here's, here's, here's where, let's just entertain this thought, if you scroll down, adult use establishments, uh, those are not, there are, there are special conditions when you get into that where you don't have alcohol, state regulations. If we are going to introduce a brew pub to a zone, we should be prepared to see an adult use establishment pop up next door, that's BYOB. Because we don't have that in Niantic, you can't do an adult use, it's not going to be, right, it's, we only have that in LI.
Oh, wait a minute, the cafe sold, does bring your own booze.
Oh, no, anybody can do BYOB, my point is, if you were to build a brew pub, you just have to walk across the street or walk next door to have a BYOB adult establishment. It's how they do it in Groton.
Well, the, right, I, I, there's that possibility.
It has a bar next to a strip club, they don't sell alcohol in strip clubs.
There is the possibility of, of that occurring, I mean, the, the, you know, again, if you look at the adult use.
I, I, sidewalk, we're going to have.
Establishment, I mean, there are, the restriction on this is that the building a premise is situated at any part of a lot within nine hundred feet radius, in any direction of any lot zone or used for, or upon which is located a building for single family or multifamily residential use, public or private school, other educational facilities, church, religious facility, hospital, library, licensed childcare, any public park, any other adult use establishment, which there are none currently, um, so those are the limitations, you give me nine hundred feet from any one of these things, it really limits the location within the zone that that use can be conducted.
Right, so, so as a contrast, we're going to approve this for any parcel in, this brew pub is for any parcel in the light industrial, whereas that adult use establishment has additional controls on it, which it can't, it's not any parcel in LI, there's probably just a few that are, meet all of the criteria.
I would suspect.
All right, I just want to make sure that we're one on one in one, you know, we're looking at how in ten years, introducing brew pubs to the light industrial is going to, is going to work and what it's going to attract. And it is, as, you know, from what I'm reading about what we, what we allow there now, there's no restaurants, there's no places to eat, there's no, and they're industrial uses.
Unless you have a special use permit, or a deli, coffee shop, or cafeteria.
Right, no, but I mean, I mean, right now, no one's really even doing that. We don't observe any health spas in our LI, um, and I would, um, so, long story short, I agree with Frank, putting it down as special use might, might be a better fit for it, because it's a, it's a, these are, this is a new frontier, you know, like, these are, we don't, we haven't had brew pubs in town, they're supposed to be popular, everyone's doing it.
Well, when I think of a brew pub, I think of an establishment that sells food, a restaurant and brewery together.
But it's not this.
No, it's not this.
Yeah.
That's, you know, I, I, I think of Willamette Brewery, you know, that they're a brewery, they're restaurant and.
I'm sorry, what about establishments that we say that we can't go within a certain number of feet of schools and churches that serve liquor, what, what would that be then?
Hundred feet, didn't we change that to hundred feet?
In the, in the Niantic Village zone.
Wasn't that changed?
Yeah.
The footage of what we used to allow to what we now allow.
I, I, I know, I, I believe that was in Niantic only, in Niantic, it was two hundred feet to a church reduced to one hundred.
No, I think Flanders.
I think it was the CA, I think it affected the CA zone.
Yeah.
CA and CB?
Because I, I, I only point that out, it's the, the church on Church Lane.
Yeah, yeah.
And Flanders Pizza.
Uh huh.
The little. Although I think there was testimony that that was over.
Yeah, but that's not a longer.
But I don't know.
Yes, that is, the church.
This is up in Flanders.
Oh, it's in the back, I'm sorry.
No, right up front, Flanders Baptist.
Family Pizza up by.
Oh, Family Pizza, oh, I'm thinking of the one up west of.
Right, near, near Flanders School.
Personally, I think, um, we should go with this special recommendation. I think it gives us a lot more leeway and control of this situation.
So, I mean, if you, you want to be specific in your response to the zoning commission, I would suggest, you know, again, you, you have to make a finding of consistency with the P O C D, in addition to any other comments that you would so choose to provide. I think you can suggest that they scratch the, the term liquor and replace it with beer.
Or ale, beer or ale?
Or they can, um, you can leave the term and include food services as being a must. Certainly make the comment that you prefer to see it as a special use permit within the zone, due to the sensitive nature of bars versus restaurants that serve alcohol.
The last time we did one of these, I'm looking at the last motion that we put forward. We suggested that this might also be appropriate use for other areas, would a CA and CB and Gateway be appropriate for such a thing?
Should we repeat that comment?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I would, I would say if we indicated that before, and I think the intent of the commi, the way I interpret it, sitting on this side, is that the intent of the commission is, yes, it, it is in support of economic growth and development. However, we have to proceed cautiously, and you have to ensure that there are specific controls to ensure that that use does not get, quote, out of hand, or become a use that is undesirable. So I, I think.
Hard to consider, back in the law.
It's, it's worth reiterating with the understanding that the controls are provided.
I think I, well, subject to further discussion, I think I have a motion, I kind of deviated, I'm, I'm just going with, very similar to the last motion we had, which I printed out with some hindsight, but it's much like what you proposed for us with those deviations. Subject to further comments I can incorporate, I'll go for it.
Yes, yeah.
A motion that the Eastline Planning Commission find the proposed text amendment, application of Theodore A. Harris for a proposed regulation change for a proposed brew pub regulation, to amend the Eastlime zoning regulations, sections one point six, watch me on this, eleven point one point seven, eleven point one point eight, and twenty-two point one point six, to permit the operation of a brew pub as consistent with the Eastlime two thousand nine plan of conservation and development for the following reasons. One, objective two point one, to promote compatible and sustainable economic development, policy being to promote compatible business in appropriate locations, to foster local employment and opportunities, a favorable tax base, the provision of goods and services for local residents in a year-round and seasonal economy that improves the overall quality of life for Eastlime residents. Also, number two, objective two point two, to support and cultivate a wide variety of economic activities that may be easily integrated into the community with little or no adverse impact on community resources. Policy, the town should encourage attractive, well-designed, commercial and industrial activity in appropriate locations in order to provide convenient services for residents. As such, the expansion of existing businesses and establishment of new businesses in the village centers in a manner that promotes a cohesive, pedestrian-friendly, mixed use of retail service in residential areas should be encouraged. The town should reserve commercial and industrial-only zones while guarding against commercial sprawl, and consider small neighborhood centers consisting of mixed-use development. In addition, the town should encourage and develop opportunities for low-impact home, home-based businesses. That's a stretch, but it's something there. And the planning commission has the following comments. The planning commission recommends that the zoning commission consider expanding the application for permitting such use in the CA commercial district.